We are going to get started here in a couple of seconds. At this time, I'd like to call the Crystal Council meeting to order, and I'd like to start with a roll call.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budaszewski.
Here.
Councilmember Dahl. Councilmember Deschler.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda in front of us, looking for a motion on this agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Julie, thank you, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have a consent agenda in front of us, I'll read that into the record at this time. First item is approval of minutes from the following meetings, the Crystal Work Session from October 11th, Crystal Work Session from October 16th, and a council meeting on that same date, approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council that is on file in her office, approval of a resolution accepting the following donations, $217.83 from donation boxes for the K-9 unit, approval of a resolution donating Becker Park playground equipment to kids around the world, approval of a resolution amending the 2018 delinquent assessment rule for the property at 5203 Angeline Avenue North, and approval of a resolution adopting the financial management plan, and approval of the updated Parks and Recreation Commission meeting bylaws, and finally, accepting resignation by Shelley Apple from the Community Outreach Task Force. That is our consent agenda, looking for a motion on this.
Make a motion.
Thank you, looking for a second?
Second.
Julie, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, I know there's some people here who are interested on one of those items, so that is done. You don't have to stay for the rest if you'd like to, you're welcome to. There you are. Is there anybody here wishing to speak during open forum?
Could I just say something?
Sure.
Thanks for coming to a good resolution on that item about the revised assessments. Looked like that was a good solution where everybody ended up a little bit unhappy, so we had a good compromise.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, I think they're happy. Are you happy? I'm seeing heads nod, so yes, good.
Hey, if everybody's happy, then that's even better.
Yeah, I think so too. All right, open forum, seeing nobody approach, we are going to skip open forum and go straight on to the regular agenda. Our first item is consideration of dispersments of $25,000 or greater, and I happen to have that here. Don't I? There it is. Thank you, I got people covering me up here, thank you, I appreciate that. First item is Beacon Academy for the return of the landscape escrow of $26,550, and then West Metro Fire Rescue District for October fire protection services of $95,305, Golden Valley for the Water Commission September billing, $187,388, Para, that's the employee and city required contribution for pay date 10/22/18 for $53,586, Novak &amp; Fleck repurchase of $2949 Yukon Avenue, $69,711, Health Partners, health insurance contribution for pay date 11/2/2018 for $96,215, and Para again for pay date 11/18, $53,958. Total dispersments of $25,000 or greater is $582,715.35. Any discussion on any of these items from the council? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
Julie.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures over $25,000.
All right, looking for a second, Oga.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Our second item on the agenda is the consideration of declaring diseased trees a public nuisance for a couple of properties, I'll let Ann Norris cover that for us.
Oh, thank you. Earlier this year, staff received complaints about potential diseased trees on the three properties you've got listed in your packet, 6911 Dudley, 3257 Florida, and 4818 Xenia. Staff got cuttings from those trees and sent them to the university to confirm that they were in fact diseased, and because according to Chapter 20 of the city code, they are considered nuisances, so we need to walk through the process of removing the nuisances. Of the three property owners, one, we have not been able to establish any communication with, we've reached out to the property owner of Dudley, the property owner of Florida intends to remove the trees by the end of November, and the property owner at Xenia is fine with us removing it and assessing it back. So, we're asking that you approve the resolutions for all three properties, just in case plans go kerplui, but that's the status of the removal of the trees.
Okay, for that Florida property, that goes past, does that go past the date we requested, or is that right at the date we requested?
I think it's right, I mean, I think it's close, but since they've been talking with us all along, and they show every intention of complying, we don't expect them not to be able to unless weather is an issue.
Okay, and, yeah, we can be flexible on that, absolutely. Okay, any other questions relating to these items? Julie?
So, just on the off chance that one of them, you know, doesn't follow through and actually move the tree, say then within the spring, we wouldn't have to revisit this, the city could just allow it?
No, we'll go remove it.
Okay.
We'll go remove it, and then the costs get assessed back against the property.
And then, this is nothing to do with diseased trees, but it is about a tree, I had a resident call me last week about a neighbor who has some unruly trees hanging over her house, and she's very fearful, you know, if it's a big windstorm or something, that it's going to come down, and she's been talking to her neighbor, kind of trying to cajole him to maybe, you know, be a responsible neighbor and cut them down, and, you know, there's just no, not working out.
Right.
So, what happens to that kind of a thing? It just, the city really can't get involved in it if the tree is not diseased?
Typically, if the tree is not diseased, or does not really present a true hazard, it's very difficult for it to, and I, I mean...
She claims they're very, very big branches, and they're right over her bedroom, and what her fear is, you know, at night, if that thing comes through her roof, it could be a hazard to her, you know?
But we can't...
It's a private matter at that point.
It's a private matter, okay.
Right, typically, it is, between the two property owners. It's very rare that we can get involved.
Oh, yeah, all right, that was the question.
Does that help? All right, any more questions on the diseased trees?
No, you know, we're discussing this chapter coming up in our next work session, correct? No, it's on the agenda tonight. It is on the agenda tonight, after this motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, just so people can follow, it's talking about expanding the definition of a shade tree, so that it's not just the two that are listed specifically, so we might see a little bit more of this moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, looks like we have, we want to do three separate resolutions on this, looking for a motion. Nancy?
I'll make a motion to adopt the following resolution, declaring the diseased tree a public nuisance and ordering it abated at 6911 Dudley Avenue North.
All right, looking for a second? John?
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Should I keep going?
Yep, keep going.
Perfect. Make a motion to adopt the following resolution, declaring the diseased tree a public nuisance and ordering it abated at 3257 Florida Avenue North.
All right, thank you.
Second that motion.
All right, thanks, John. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
And lastly, make a motion to adopt the following resolution, declaring the diseased tree a public nuisance and ordering it abated at 4818 Xenia Avenue North.
All right, thank you, Nancy. John?
Go move.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, very good.
I'm really excited about that, because I had declare a tree a public nuisance on my, like, on my, yeah, my list of things to do before I got here. I always wanted to declare something a public nuisance.
All right, our next item is Item 5.3, we will consider awarding a contract for the demolition of Becker Park Building. John Elholm is here, he's our recreational director, and to address us on that. Welcome, John.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm pleased to be here to talk a little bit more about Becker Park. As you may have noticed, there's been some changes going on up at Becker Park here over the last few months, and the next step in this is to remove the building. The way we're looking at it is the more we can accomplish before we hire a contractor, the lower the ultimate final cost will be. So, plans are nearly complete for the project, and the existing performing arts building is not part of that, and should be removed prior to construction. We did do an environmental study, and there is no asbestos on the site, so we went out and received quotes, we received quotes from three contractors to do the work. Keavitt Companies was the lowest quote, and they have successfully completed similar work within the City of Crystal, and I believe they're also a City of Crystal business. So, with that, just requesting to approve the resolution awarding a demolition contract at Becker Park to Keavitt Companies in the amount of $52,500.
All right, go ahead, Julie.
I just have a question. You asked, you earlier, you mentioned it would likely be done or demolished prior to Christmas, weather permitting?
Correct, we've given them about, I think, about a five-week window to...
And then, I know that, like, the Lions Club had articles in it that they used for making, you know, concessions, and they've got it out, but I wondered if the Frolix Committee, do they have anything in there that, I'm sure you've been and talked to them.
Yeah, we've been in contact...
I'm just covering all the bases.
Right, we've been in contact, you know, starting a couple of months ago with Frolix and with the Lions Club, and we've got some of our own things in there that we've been removing from the building.
Okay, I mean, all the tables and chairs and stuff, that'll be removed and repurposed somewhere else.
Right, we actually were able to sell some things from the building, and other things that are nice that we want to keep, we've moved to different buildings.
Okay.
So, we're just really getting it ready to go.
Okay.
And the flagpole as well, right?
It'll be moved.
That will be moved, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, this is going to be done this year?
Yes.
While I'm still covered under the city's, the city's workers' comp thing, right?
That's correct.
Is there any way I can drive the bulldozer?
Uh, Mr. Attorney?
I think we'll have that conversation...
Withdrawn. Withdrawn.
I have a question.
John?
Of the cost of the demolition, is that pretty much in line with what you thought it would be? I mean, we know what we have available for funding for our parks project, but could you talk a little bit about that as well, great?
Sure, we had some initial estimates when we were putting the plan together for demolition. We had a little bit lower number, but that was for just doing the building. What we've asked this contractor to do is to do some of the retaining walls around the flagpole to do, to go a wider area. One of the unique things about that particular building is there's a red brick that we can't dispose of as easily as some of the other materials, so we're having them do as much of that as we can to, we just have to take it to a different location.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, looking for a motion? John?
Make a motion awarding the contract for demolition of the performing arts building in Becker Park.
Nancy?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Was it already hard? Say aye.
Yeah.
It looks so much different already, just driving by, it's seen the fence really opened up.
Okay, our next item is to consider the utility rates, we have our financial director, Jean Gagnon, here to address the council. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Well, Kim is looking for the presentation that I have developed for this, thank you. Just a little bit of history with the utility rate study that we're looking at this evening. This year, the city council had decided to review the utility rates for water, sewer, and storm drainage. The city's infrastructure is about 40 to 60 years old, and it's in need of repair, excuse me, maintenance and replacements, so the city's decided to take more of a proactive approach and really look at how the city's going to be able to do these improvements. And so, as part of the utility rate study, they've also, the city's also developed a long-term plan. So, as we go through this process, the utility rate study analyzes the water and the sanitary sewer utilities of the city. We also have the sources and uses... Okay. Well, I apologize, the presentation that I was to give is not on the computer here, so I will verbally give you my presentation.
I thought maybe Kim didn't know the screen was on, or she was going to fire up Solitaire or something, that was pretty funny.
Everybody saw my work. There was an icon on the computer screen that said "presentation," did you click on that?
Sh sorec. Yeah. It's the, our...
Oh, it was, okay.
It's not there.
We'll believe that, she didn't find it, thank you. Go ahead, Jean.
Do you see it in there? I don't know what your presentation is.
All right, double checking.
Need some unhold music or something.
All right. However, I can very easily share with you all the information that went into the utility rate study. Now, as we go through the utility rate study, it's important to take a look at what inflation's going to be over a period of years. So, what we did is that we're projecting that fees are actually going to increase, they're not fees, but the overall inflation is going to increase about 3% annually, and as we're going through this process, we are targeting a specific cash reserve to ensure there are adequate funds to pay for the various infrastructure improvements. In addition to that, we also have to take a look at how many users are going to be added to the system. Now, since the City of Crystal is essentially, you know, fully developed, we only have a increase of about 36 users from 2019 to 2028. As we also went through the pres, excuse me, I apologize, it's very difficult when you can't see what I'm talking about, so I do apologize for that.
Jean, they do have the presentation in their packets that the public cannot watch for a long.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, as we went through the utility rate analysis, a couple important things to note is that...
I'm sorry, one second. Do we not have the camera thingy again?
Well, that's what, can we do overhead?
Overhead projection, where you just...
Do we still have the camera thingy?
Do it old-fashioned. Mm-hmm. Okay. Or I can find it on the Internet for you.
Let's take a brief recess. Did you hear any good jokes?
Adaptable, if not.
There we go. Boom.
I will zoom out.
All right.
That'll work.
Shall we start this again?
Yes.
That's great.
All right. So, as I mentioned, the projections assume the fees are inflated at least 3% annually, and it assumes additional increases in order to meet the various targets that we need to pay for the infrastructure improvements. The operational expenses are also assumed to be 3%. The meter fee is something where the primary, the number of meters that we're looking at in the city, there is almost 8,000 different meters that we have within the city, and primarily, the size of those meters are about 5/8 of an inch, although that is associated with residential The targeted cash reserve, the way that we establish a targeted cash reserve is we're looking at 100% of the following year's debt service, but fortunately, neither the water or the sewer utility funds have any debt at this point, which is extremely unusual. However, if there was debt, we would have to take into consideration the amount of principal and interest that would need to be paid on that debt. In addition to that, we take a look at what type of capital are we going to be purchasing, capital meaning the various infrastructure improvements throughout the next year, and then we're also looking at 50% of the following year's operating expenses. So, as we review all of this information, at the current state with the rates that are currently being charged, the cash reserves are not sufficient in order to meet the infrastructure improvements that are needed. So, what we did with this then is we took a look at the overall rates and made some various assumptions as far as what would, what would happen if we changed the rate structure. Now, if you look at the average residential quarterly bill, if you, in the center of the slide, in 2019, we'd see an increase in the quarterly bill of about $68, and sanitary sewer about $47. Now, this could really, you know, scare a lot of people off, because just in looking at that one particular number, it seems very high. However, if you go into and look at a scenario where a residential individual has an average of 9,000 gallons of water use, then they will have an annual increase of $50 a year. So, the quarterly increase is $12.59. So, that's a lot more manageable as you look at 2019. However, on a commercial billing, if they have 14,000 gallons of water usage, then they will also see a quarterly increase of $12.59, because everything's based on tiers as far as your water consumption is concerned. As we move on to the sewer rates, sewer rates are a little bit different, because as we were looking at the sewer rates, one of the considerations was that we really needed to take a look at what is the base fee, and then what is a consumption fee? Previously, as in the billings that are being sent out right now, the sanitary sewer is based on a flat fee. With this new rate analysis, what we've done is we are basing the sewer fee on water consumption. Now, how that works is that we're actually looking at the winter water consumption, so that it is fair, because people use their sprinkling systems, they do other, you know, other types of irrigation, and we want to make certain that it is a fair cost for the sewer fees. So, in this particular instance, if a user has 9,000 gallons of water, they're going to see an actual decrease in their sewer bill on an annual basis of about $56. And on a commercial, commercial typically uses substantially less sewer than what a residential home would use, so we base this on a 2,000-gallon user, and so they'd actually see an annual decrease of about $170. To do a comparison, we wanted to take a look at communities surrounding Crystal, and these are the cities that we typically use for comparisons for the City of Crystal. And as you look at this, we have, the first Crystal line is what the current billing would be based on 9,000 gallons of water. And then, if you look at the Crystal Scenario 2, that's indicative of what the bill would look like in 2019 for 9,000 gallons of water. So, as you see, we have the sewer is actually going down because of the low water usage, and then the water fee will go up, that $12 that we had talked about previously. So, I mentioned before that we're looking at the targeted reserves. Currently, as we look at the targeted reserves, we are way out of balance. So, as we went through this projection, we knew that we couldn't immediately have the amount of cash reserves that are necessary, so we did a graduated scale, so that by the year 2024, we are in alignment with the cash reserves that are necessary to move forward with the infrastructure. Sewer is very similar in the fact that it is 2024 before we actually do have the adequate targeted reserves. In 2018, yes, there are adequate targeted reserves, however, in 2019, with the infrastructure improvements planned, that targeted reserves dips dramatically. I also think it's important to share what a sample bill looks like when you are looking at 2018 and comparing that to 2019. In this particular instance, we, we have four examples of different invoices, and these are actual invoices that we pulled from the utility billing system, and we looked at, you know, you have 9,000 gallons of water, once again, and so, with, for the billing period of May 29th of 18 through August 25th of 18, that particular residence had an invoice of $155. Well, in 2019, if you had the exact same usage, that invoice would be $134 for a decrease of $21. Another area that I really wanted to bring forward was that currently, for seniors, we have what's called a senior discount. With the way the new utility billing structure will work, that senior discount will be eliminated, however, because of the consumption that seniors have on the water side, and since the sewer invoice is based on the water consumption, I would say that seniors should generally see their bills go down. In this particular situation, we have the water consumption of 14,000 gallons, and if you look on this, it says sewer, we have 5,000. The 5,000 is because we're actually using the winter consumption of water. So, in this case, they should see a decrease of $5.24 based on 14,000 gallons of water. I have one more example of a senior invoice. In this particular case, they actually utilize 6,000 gallons of water, and so, however, they had, during the winter consumption, for some reason, in this particular case, they had a higher consumption level of water.
Running toilet.
So, they'd actually see a $3 increase in that case. So, at this point, you know, I'm very happy to address any questions that you may have, and ask you to consider, you know, accepting and approving the utility rate study.
Julie?
It's always kind of seemed to me, you know, if, let's say, you know, I was gone for an entire month, and I didn't use any water, but it always seems like I still get the minimum base charge whether I use it or not. Is that still going to be true here? Because, and the reason I'm asking is there's a fair amount of snowbirds in my area, and essentially, they don't use any water January, February, March, because they're gone, and so, is that reflected then on their bill, or do they just pay part of a certain water amount just because?
Okay, I just want to share this with you. As you look at the sample bill, you'll see that there are some fees that we can't get away with. The emergency well surcharge?
Right.
That's a given, it's a pass-through. As, excuse me, that, I have to apologize, the emergency well surcharge is a fee that will be on the invoice regardless. The state testing fee is a pass-through. But then, you also have a meter fee that is also consistent, and so that would also be a fixed fee. It's just based on the, you know, consumption, so you're always going to have a fee, and for the fact that as the rates currently exist, sewer is based on a flat fee. So, even if it is a snowbird, they're still going to receive that flat fee on the sewer side.
But, but the water consumption is the big, you know, the big nut to crack here, and so if they're not using any water, I would think that that $108.30 would go away.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
That's correct, okay. Well, I like that. I mean, people should pay for what they use, but if they're not using it, I think that they should see a savings.
That's right.
That's great.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think the move was to make it all more consumer, face on consumption, so that's something I think Jeff brought up in one of those meetings.
Yeah, I think the residents will really like that.
It just, it just makes so much sense, and we have pass-through fees coming from that council, so the adjustments on those are direct.
So, all right, looking for a motion on this? There's no further discussion? Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve the utility rate study.
Thank you, looking for a second? Oga?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jean. I think your staff too, they, they really did a nice job of running those numbers, there were a lot of numbers on this analysis, a lot of work, so thank you.
I will definitely thank them.
I will definitely thank them.
All right.
And especially those sample, those examples of bills, that was very helpful to see.
Okay. And she's not going anywhere because she's on the next item as well. So, this is for utility. So, go ahead, Jean.
Okay. To continue with utility rates, each year, the city council does need to go through an approval process for the rates. And this evening, we are asking that you have the documents in front of you that list all the various fees, and the fee schedule, of course, has been structured for the new structure from the utility rate study, where we do have the sewer rates not at a flat fee, but based on the water consumption in the winter months. So, all of the various fees are within the information that you have this evening, and I would entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions on any of the fees? Seeing nobody. I have a comment. I think that the council's heard me say this time and time again, but there's, there's still the one fee, we've got the comments related to the license fees on rental units. It's, it's still in my mind fairly punitive because it's 100% of what the, the license fee is, and I'm not sure we have any other penalty that's that punitive in our whole system. I'm not interested in doing anything today on this, but at some point in time, I'd like to readjust or have a conversation about actually adjusting it below 100%. We can still do tapered if, I'd be interested in talking about doing a tapered amount, but really, I'd like to see that 100% go down to something that's in line with some other And the, the reason is, this is more penalty than what we do for alcohol and tobacco, and it doesn't make sense to me. So, that's kind of my rationale behind it. That's the only comment I have. Looking for a motion? Julie?
I'll make a motion for a resolution approving the 2018 utility fee schedule.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Jean. Next, we have our city attorney, Troy Gilchrist, here to talk about Chapter 12. Welcome, Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Well, I'm pleased to say you have three chapters before you this evening for a first reading, and if all goes well, you'll have these before you for a second reading in December, which will mean you have gone through all of the chapters in your code before the end of the year.
Wow.
Awesome.
Big accomplishment. Yes. So, let's do these one at a time, of course, so that what you have before you first is Chapter 12, which is the chapter dealing with liquor licenses. And this, like the other three chapters, or the other two chapters we'll be looking at, has been before you, I think, in, in each of these cases, three times. As you all know, and just for the public's sake, every one of these chapters have been before you at least twice in a work session before it comes here for a first reading. Some cases, more than that. More than three, more than four. I think one, we had five times. So, the, so you've seen this before, so I apologize if I, I go quickly through these, but what you have with Chapter 12 is liquor licensing. As you know, you recently went through and adopted 10 and 11, which deal with your other licensing. 12 frankly is regulated to a degree by state law that it just doesn't work well to meld in with the other types of licenses that you issue. And so, pretty routinely among cities, this is a standalone chapter that reflects and has to reflect state law on this. And so, what you have is a decision that the council had made two, three years ago after the legislature expanded Chapter 348 to include the, what we've seen around with the increase with the brew pubs and things like that. So, there was a longer list of, of types of licenses that could be issued. The city had previously acted to expand the code to encompass that and make those licenses available within the city. And so, what this rewrite of Chapter 12 has done is to try to make it easier to read, sets it out. Now, when I say easier to read, you're never going to make liquor laws easy to read, but at least easier to read. And at least that's the goal. And then, in a couple of cases, the council also directed that in situations, well, essentially, bottom line of this is to align it more closely with, with state law. So, in, in certain cases, the city had previously put in some additional restrictions that the council thought it made sense to more align it with, with what's actually required in law rather than imposing those additional restrictions. So, really, what this is, is hopefully easier to read, that more closely aligns with the statutes, Chapter 348 on this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I mean, there really wasn't any sort of dramatic policy changes in this. It's, it's more of a cleanup and aligned with state law.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Any points, comments? I'll make one comment. It, it doesn't change any punitive action that we take. I think that was left alone. Just, just when, when we say we've removed some regulation, we didn't remove underage drinking or anything like that, so.
No, no, no.
That stays in place. We haven't reduced the fines or fees. It's all the same as it was prior to this, this update, so just wanted to clarify that point. All right, looking for a motion? John?
I'll make a motion approving the ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Crystal City Code related to alcohol.
All right, thanks, John. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Nancy? Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So, why don't you just continue down the list?
Will do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So, Chapter 13 deals, is titled Traffic Motor Vehicles and Other Vehicles. This one is a little bit, has more to discuss. Large portions of this deal with primarily because the state law addresses state highway traffic regulations with, which this chapter adopts by reference rather than trying to restate all of that. And that's true for a number of these things where there were, there are portions of this chapter that were just repeating what was in state law, and so, consistent with the way the council's approached this project, as saying, you know, why are we repeating this? And instead, we just reference state law. So, that was done in a number of these situations with Section 1305 dealing with, with street closures. There was some clarification there of authority, who can close streets, and what sort of barricades and warnings are placed related to street closures. So, I actually think that, that does improve this section and make it clear who has the authority. One of the new sections, so this is new for this chapter, is the idea of, or concerns raised regarding the shared mobility devices. And I say that, the, the term is, is meant to encompass things that I, I think we've all seen by now, the, the shared bicycles and the, the shared scooter programs that are an app-based program where you, you get on one of these with the app and you drive to, to your trip, and then you leave it there for someone else to pick up. Concerns have been expressed to the council regarding the potential to have these laying in the streets and sidewalks and interfering with folks trying to travel in, in your public raceway. And so, what is proposed in this chapter, or excuse me, in this section, is to put in place essentially parking restrictions. This does not get into a, a full-blown regulation of, of these types of activities or a licensing scheme or permitting scheme. Instead, it just says, do not leave these devices on our sidewalks, our trails, or in our streets. So, it, it places those restrictions, those parking restrictions. It provides express authority for law enforcement to impound these devices, and it reserves for the council the authority to impose, establish a fee for reclaiming these devices once they have been impounded by law enforcement. The other sections here deal with statutory procedures associated with abandoned junk and unauthorized vehicles, which, when I say statutory, I meant that we align ourselves more in, in accordance with what the statute say rather than, again, repeating it. Talks about adoption of state license laws, again, reference to state law on that one. Storage of vehicles and recreational vehicles. This, I understand, is a section that came out of a great deal of work by a task force that was formed by the city several years ago. Those regulations remain. We did clean up some of the provisions, but the, the general restrictions remain with the exception of the set number of, a predetermined set number of vehicles that may be parked. That is being removed, but otherwise, the other regulations regarding coverage limitations, those sorts of things remain within that section. The snowmobile regulations remain, motorcycle and motorbike regulations. Skateboard section was cleaned up to make it easier to, to read and follow. And another new section that will, I'm sure, generate some conversation based on the, the work session is mobile food unit. So, in other words, a, a reference to food trucks, and it speaks to where they may be parked to operate as a business, indicating that they may be operated within private commercial industrial parking lots with permission of the property owner, maybe on residential property with, of course, the permission of the property owner, but only with related, in relation to events occurring on that property, a wedding, graduation party, that sort of thing. Allowing them in city parking lot or a public park with a permit issued by the city, allowing them on a city street only with respect to a special event that's occurring on that street, and then with a permit from the city. The new section talks about the permitting process and establishes certain minimum performance standards that mobile food, food units need to comply with when operating lawfully within the city. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and, and it occurred to me, I didn't state clearly, that all of these are up for first reading tonight.
All right. Any comments, questions? All right, seeing none? I believe we have a potential amendment?
Yeah, so we had some conversation in the work session before this about some of the language around the mobile food units, AKA food trucks. And so, I'm offering an amendment to the ordinance that's in front of you. So, I would make a motion to amend this ordinance to alter 1345.07. Basically, we're just going to strike B, item B, 134507B, and then re-letter the remaining bullet points underneath B, so that C would become B, et cetera.
Correct.
So, that's my motion.
All right, looking for a second on that motion?
I'll second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
All right, and then I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance. I want to point out that there's, I don't know if it matters or not, but the typo and language in our sheet here that the Roman numerals are incorrect.
Mm-hmm.
So...
I think they just carried the 12 down through the 3.
Yeah, so for 5.7 and 5.8, they both say Chapter 12, but it's not. It's chapter. So, I'll just read it, just to be clear. And so, this is motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Crystal City Code related to traffic, motor, and other vehicles.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second? Oga?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
All right, food trucks, let's go. I'm hungry.
All right, the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This is Chapter 20 before you for a first reading. This is a delete-all approach to Chapter 20. This deals with, it's a bit of a mixed bag of misdemeanors. So, it deals with a, a range of, of items, disorderly conduct, resisting officers, loitering, liquor in the parks, trespass, nuisance, et cetera. So, it's, it's, again, a bit of a catch-all of prohibitions within the city. An attempt, as with the other chapters, was made to clean this up to the extent possible, adopt by reference state law rather than restating it. Did make some clarifications. It was pointed out that some of the liquor in the park and special event may not be, may prohibit things that are currently occurring or may occur, such as allowing to have alcohol on a city street that's closed as part of a special event. The existing language has had a strict prohibition with no exceptions, so now there are some exceptions to better reflect how these are actually being operated. Most notably, Public Works, Mark Ray, expressed a lot of concern regarding the current shade tree, and the council did as well regarding the limited scope of the shade tree. So, Mark Ray raised some of the procedural concerns associated with what's currently in the code and what a city, what the city has to do to go about to address diseased trees. And then, it was also recognition by the council that, and, and this is, I think, just a historic fact, that when these first hit the statutory scheme, it was focused on Dutch elm disease and oak wilt. And unfortunately, as we, as we all know, the diseases you face today are not limited to those two. And so, the council directed that the refer, as well as a reference to which trees, of course, were reflective of just those two, so it was oak and, and elm. And so, instead, and, and again, consistent with the statute, shade tree definition was expanded to include other types of shade tree. In fact, I tried to track with what the state statute defines shade tree as. And then, as far as shade tree disease, again, rather than just listing a couple, it, it was more open-ended, so the city is more flexible in its ability to respond to shade diseases, shade tree diseases that may occur within the city. So, that was expanded. And then, with the graffiti implements, again, this reflects something that's in statute, but greater detail is placed in the code. The scope of having graffiti implements near schools was expanded to point out, the point being that this is a bad thing regardless of whether you're within 200 feet or whatever that distance was, or 300 feet of a school. So, spread that out, had a broader scope to it to address folks who may be engaging in graffiti. Again, I'd be happy to answer any more questions, but Chapter 20 is before you for first reading, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Troy. Questions from the council? None. No questions. Motion. Julie?
I'll make a motion to amend that Chapter 20 of the Crystal City Code related to, related to misdemeanors.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Nancy? Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, the next item is consideration of the 2019-2020 labor agreement with law enforcement, labor services, Local 44. Kim Terrace is here to talk to us on that.
Thank you. I do not have a fancy presentation, so.
That's okay.
No worries. So, I'm here before you tonight to talk about the 2019-2020 labor contract with Local 44, who are our police officers. There's about five cha, or six changes to the contract. One relates to the duration. It's a two-year contract for 19 and 20, and we also changed or added some language regarding retroactive pay and one that would be paid out. The wages are 3% for each year of 2019 and 20. We also changed the insurance contr, employer insurance contribution, which is a shared increase between the employer and the employee with a re-opener in 2020 for that sole purpose. We changed the injury on duty to change, to convert days to hours so that it's more easily tracked for officers, because officers have various schedules, not necessarily working on eight-hour typical day. And then, we changed the waiting period to match state law for it from five days to three days. We changed the language regarding longevity and educational incentive pay and took out language that is no longer needed or is out of date. And then, we altered the holidays a little bit by adding Thanksgiving Friday, which is the fourth Friday in November, as one of the holidays that employees would receive a time, at time and a half, overtime at time and a half. So, this is consistent with other labor agreements that you have approved previously with the Local 56 police supervisors as well as the non-represented employees, and it is consistent too with other metro area cities and with their... And it is consistent, too, with other metro area cities and with their, and with the previous council direction. So I do encourage you to approve this 2019-2020 proposed contract.
Thank you, Kim. Questions on this contract? So just clarification on holiday.
Yep.
It says 12 holidays. Is that number the same, or did that increase by one?
It did not increase.
Okay.
How they are compensated for that one holiday changed slightly.
All right. Any other questions? That's all I had. Looking for a motion? John?
I'm making a motion to approve the authorization of executing the 2019-2020 labor agreement with the law enforcement labor services local board.
All right, awesome. Looking for a second? Julie?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work on that.
It's nice to have it settled before the following, before it starts.
Before the start of the year. Yes, that's very nice. We have one more to go.
That's right. All right, I believe that was our last item. So we do have a couple announcements. Office will be closed on Monday, November 12, in observation of the Veterans' Holiday. The council will have a special meeting to canvass the results of the 2018 municipal elections. That's going to be November 15. That's a Thursday at 6:30 PM in Conference Room A at City Hall. Next citizens input time is going to be Tuesday, November 20, at 6:00 PM. That's also, that's in Conference Room A. Next city council meeting is going to be Tuesday, November 20. Technically, that would be the second next council meeting. Tuesday, November 20, at 7:00 PM at Crystal Hall. That would be here. Crystal Business Association is meeting on Wednesday, November 21, at 8:30 AM, and that's at Christina's Childcare at 5510 West Broadway. City offices will be closed November 22 and Friday, the 23, in observation of Thanksgiving Day holiday. And reminder that Girl Scout and Boy Scout troops are welcome to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Just get in contact with our staff, and they'll help you through that. And reminder that any of the meetings, work sessions are on the website, so they're there for your viewing and listening pleasure at our website, www.cristalmn.gov. We have any other announcements?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead with the one that was passed out. Julie?
Yeah, and Veterans' Day, November 11. The City of Minneapolis Park and Rec Board, City of Minneapolis, Hennepin County, and City of Robinsdale have put together a nice presentation remembering World War I, the Great War. The celebration or ceremony will start at 10 o'clock at the Flagpole Plaza at 45th Avenue and Victory Memorial Drive. The program will have some speakers that are well-versed on the war's local history. There'll be a musician there, moment of silence. They also have like a three-run volley. They're going to have some, I know our VFW in Crystal Ritual Squad is dressing up somebody in a really authentic World War I uniform, so I've seen him, he looks really nice. So it'll be just a nice ceremony honoring the World War I veterans and, you know, families. So if you can make it, love to see you.
All right, thank you, Julie. Are there any other announcements from any other members?
Or Julie?
Yeah. That's all I got.
All right. With that, looking for a motion for adjournment? Nancy?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Looking for a second? I'm going to just.
I'll second that.
Yes. All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, have a great night. See you next time.